Welcome to the August 11, 2020, meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. I call this regular meeting to order. I would like to ask Madam Clerk to proceed with the roll call.
Okay, thank you Chair Moore. Vice Chair Wang?
Chair Wang here.
Commissioner Feng?
Present.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Commissioner Saxina?
Here.
And Chair Moore?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable notice requirements. Members of the public may offer public comment by email to planning@cupidino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission and make them part of the record. And if you are calling in, you need to press *9 to speak. So, next is item one on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Item one, subject draft minutes of the August 11, 2020 meeting. Recommended action: approve or modify the draft minutes of August 11, 2020. I hope you've had a chance to go over the minutes. And if so, would someone like to make a motion?
I approve to, I move to approve the minutes as written.
So I can do that.
Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Wang?
Yes, please, yeah.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Approve.
Commissioner Feng?
Approve.
Commissioner Saxina?
Abstain.
And Chair Moore?
Aye, approve.
Thank you. The motion carries 401 with Commissioner Saxina abstaining.
Okay, thank you. And now we move on to postponements. We have none. And then oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. I see one hand raised. And done. And here we go. Okay, we have Rhoda Frye.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. And welcome.
My first time talking at a meeting via Zoom, a city meeting.
Okay.
Just sent you a note, and I'll read it to you. A couple of years ago, I went to the Cupertino City Council meeting asking for more progress to be made around fire safety. I think the time is right to bring it up again. First, we need to look at making tall buildings more defensible. One idea is to clad buildings with rock wool, which is a non-combustible insulation. The added benefit is that this insulation also makes buildings more energy efficient and more affordable to live in. Second, we need to revisit our preparedness for fires, particularly in WUI zones. That's W-U-I, which stands for Wildland Urban Interface. I've provided some maps and documents in my email to you. In August 2016, the counties conducted a survey for fire safety around the WUI zones. And they also included a 20-page appendix for fire-safe projects specifically within Cupertino, which proposed timelines that, at the time, I felt were not sufficiently aggressive. I'm asking the planning commission to revisit this document and see where we are with it and the recommendations to determine how much of it has been adopted and whether we should do more. Thank you very much.
Right.
Oh, now I see your clock.
You have more time if you'd like to continue.
No, no, I'm good. Short and sweet.
Okay, thank you, Rhoda.
Thank you.
Okay, there is another caller, but they don't have their hand raised. Are callers with just their number allowed to have their hand raised and indicate that? Or do I just bring them in? I'll just see if they want to speak.
And they do have a way they would do *9 to raise their hand?
Okay, well, I'll ask if they would like to unmute. I they, it doesn't look like they want to speak. Okay, so if you did, if you did call in, I have a caller 1934. If you would like to speak, hit *9, and then you'll be able to speak. Okay. All right, so that, the hand's not raised for that. So, do we have any written communications, Madam Clerk?
No, the only email that we received was the one Rhoda just mentioned in her all communications, and I did while she was speaking. Forward that to all of you at your planning commission, a general mailbox. The links there, she didn't have attachments, she had links to the maps that she was speaking of. And this will be included as a desk item in the packet tomorrow.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we have nothing on the consent calendar, and then we move on to public hearings. Item two, subject the hillside exception to allow the construction of a new swimming pool, spa, adjacent patio, and related retaining walls and grading within the 15% sightline of a prominent ridge line and on slopes greater than 30%. Application number EXC 2020-001, applicant Janet DeCarly, location 11640 Regnar Canyon Drive, assessors parcel number 366-33-006. Recommended action: let the planning commission adopt the proposed draft resolution to: one, find the project exempt from SEQA, and two, approve the hillside exemption, exception. Planning commission decision is final unless appealed. And we begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Ben Foo, Director of Community Development. This project is for hillside exception, as you mentioned. UNICOD prohibits structures that disrupts a 15% sightline from a ridge line, as well as development on slopes greater than 30%. With part of the proposal, unfortunately, some of the outdoor amenities areas encroach a little bit into that area. John Martier, our project planner, is here today to describe the project a little bit more in greater detail. And with that, I will hand it off to John. John?
Yes, thank you, Ben. Yes, I'm John Martier, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. And let me just share my screen really quick. Can everyone see that? Perfect. Okay, so again, as Chair Moore had described the project, and as Ben had followed up, this is a hillside exception, EXC 2020-001, located 11640 Regnar Canyon Drive, up in the western foothills of Cupertino. So again, the subject is for hillside exception for these accessory structures that are within the 15% sightline of a prominent ridge and development of engraved over 500 square feet on slopes greater than 30%. So again, here's the aerial of the project location, which you can see, unfortunately, unlike the council chambers where you have that neat little finger drawing, I can do around the property, you have to follow my cursor. The teal-blue line is the parcel line right here with identifying Regnar Canyon Road, the private drive that leads to access to a few of the properties in this part of the neighborhood. The surrounding uses are primarily single-family homes, similar to the one on this property. The zoning is RHS 120, which essentially means that the minimum lot size for any new parcels is about 120,000 square feet. The size of this parcel is about four, slightly north of four acres, or almost 180,000 square feet. And on the parcel itself is a 6100 square foot, two-story residence, I believe was built in the early 80s. So again, the proposed project is expand on an existing 556-square-foot patio. The expansion will equal about 70 square feet of patio area. The swimming pool is approximately about 950 square feet. And along with our, some associated retaining walls holding up these structures, as well as some landscaping, which includes trees and various native and drought-tolerant, low-water use of landscape bushes and whatnot. So again, I have a comparison to the existing side proposed addition. On the left of here, you see how the existing footprint is. You see the existing patio area right here. The new patio area with the pool essentially be adding on to the existing area adjacent to the house. Again, this is the east side, this is again the east side right here. So this is some, a few of the 3D renderings and photo simulations that we see of the proposed addition. There are more that are part of the packet that, if you request to see some more, I can show you additionally. So you can see that you have this infinity pool, which would, there's three levels, you have the spa, you have the pool right here, which cascades into a trough that runs underneath. Then what you have is essentially three levels of terracing, retaining walls supporting the patio and the pool right here. The tallest retaining wall on its individually is about five and a half feet, which is pretty much right around where the city policy requires you to start terracing out those retaining walls. The last thing we want to have is retaining walls that are visible, potentially visible to the public, that are over five or six feet tall. The architects have done a decent job of planning some type of landscaping around the retaining wall to hide or lessen the visual impact of these structures right here. So the hillside exception, so the RHS ordinance or Chapter 19.40, again prohibits any structures that disrupt a 15% sightline from a prominent ridge line. As you can see from this parcel with this light green line, is essentially the prominent ridge line, which runs straight through the house right here. This red circle right here denotes the approximate area of the development of the accessory structure. Further, the ordinance also prohibits any structures or improvements of 500 square feet in an area on slopes greater than 30%. The staff report had a more holistic view of the property, which showed these dark hash marks that denoted slopes that are greater than 30%. And what you've seen is basically, the vast majority of the property is over 30% grade. And so this is just the excerpt of the area where the pool and the decking will be. And you can see kind of the outlier here. And again, it's pretty much 30%. So although the ordinance does prohibit, it does allow exceptions. If there are certain unique circumstances or hardships that the city may consider an exception, provided project is designed to minimizing some of the exception impacts to surrounding hillside, to the surrounding hillside. So in this case, what we, what staff had analyzed was that the siding and design of the proposed structure minimized the grading overall, as it is adjacent to the house and the existing patio, eliminating any need for any pathways to the structure, any further grade for the resident access. And the fact that much of the existing area is being maintained, and it will be ingrained, graded. The city has historically granted exceptions to allow reasonable development of steeper hillside properties planned for residential use. One commission of approval that we brought back from an old exception to this, on this property, was that back in 2009, the prior project, it was noted by staff that six former existing trees were topped by the resident, and they were conditioned to replace those trees on a one-to-one basis with six 48-inch box, California-native incense cedars, to kind of mask the addition, although the addition never happened, from the valley and to kind of, a little bit better, try and minimize the impact of a potential impact of a two-story home from surrounding properties. From what we can tell, those six trees were never planted. And so we are, in effort to be consistent with prior applications and approvals, we are going to, we added this condition. One thing to note that, in discussions with the project architect, he did know that 24-inch box trees actually adapt better to sloped areas and have a higher rate of longevity if they're planted at a smaller size rather than in a 48-inch box size, and require actually less grading on the site. So what we could do, what we're suggesting, is that give the applicant an option, whether they plant a six 40-inch box instead cedars, or make them nine 24-inch box instead. And you can see that the additional language is in the underline right here. As all hillside homes, or any home that are in some type of geologic hazard zone, this goes through a geologic review. And as this was over 500 square feet, it automatically triggered a peer review of any geotech report that has been submitted by the applicant. And as such, property is located in the hillside in slope instability geologic hazard zone. The city's geotechnical consultant, Con Shires, peer reviewed the applicant's geotechnical reports, and has concluded, from a geologic standpoint, that he approves of the project as designed. Of course, the recommendations for further analysis, for further study, has been incorporated under the Public Works conditions and the draft resolution. I do want to note that the applicant's geotech team is here to answer any questions about the design of the structure and how they're going to mitigate any potential slope hazards. SEQA, so this is, this project is technically exempt under the 15303, which is single-family residences, and also 15303E, which is accessory structures such as patios and swimming pools. Outreach. And one of the things, we still, we haven't got any comments from the public, either in support or non-support for the project. Staff's conclusion that the development cannot feasibly occur on the property without a hillside exception, again, as the staff report had discussed, most of the property is actually, you know, 30%, has a 30% grade on it. Anyways, any, any structure over 500 square feet, or any area gray over 500 square, would have to, would trigger hillside exception. The location design of a proposed patio and pool will follow the contours of the site to minimize grading, minimize removal of landscaping, and reduce the visibility of retaining walls. In fact, I, most of the, will be, actually very little grading at all, as part of this, mostly fill that would come in, I believe 150 cubic yards of fill rather than grading. However, the patio and the pool will follow that, will follow the slope of the hill. Geotechnical study has been conducted, and all recommendations have been incorporated into the development conditions of approval. And findings for approval of the proposed project consist of the Chapter 19.40, other UNICODs have been met. Next up, the planning commission decision on this proposal is final unless an appeal is filed within 14 calendar days of the day of the mailing of the decision on August 25, 2020. Our recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the proposed draft resolution to, one, find the project exempt from SEQA, and two, approve the hillside exception. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, John. So if any of the planning commissioners spoke to the applicant, or received any outside communications, or visited the site, we need to indicate that. I did go visit the site this afternoon and took some photographs. Would anyone else like to indicate any ex parte communications?
No communications, but I drove by the area to get a feel for the neighborhood.
No communications, but I have driven by that area many times in the past.
No communications on my part.
Okay. And Commissioner Takahashi is present? I thought I saw him.
Yeah, no, I said none. I just nodded, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. All right. And then, are we going to have any presentation from the applicant? Or are we, does the applicant have a presentation for us, or are we just going to move on to asking clarifying questions?
Patrick Whistler, landscape park.
Okay, you just cut out for a minute. So you, the applicant has 10 minutes to make a presentation if you would like to.
Okay, I do, I just want to let you know what I have available. I could share some of the materials that are being proposed, if that's helpful.
Yes, please.
Okay. Should be here somewhere.
Don't worry, I've restarted your time. There's no hurry.
Okay, here we go. Let's kind of drag this into the shared screen here. Okay, so you can see this now, right?
No.
Okay. Now, let's see. Maybe I'm not sharing all. Share all windows.
Did you hit share screen?
Yeah, so I think I hit.
Through the chair, Patrick, is this the same PDF that you sent me earlier?
Yeah, yeah, if you wouldn't mind pulling that up.
Let me, give me about two seconds, and I'll be able to pull it out here. I have it right here. Do you mind if I share a screen, Chair Moore?
Not at all, help yourself.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys see that? Okay?
Yes.
All right, Patrick, just let me know when you want me to.
Yeah. So this is a couple of example photos of what we might use, something similar to this, on the exposed pool walls of the, what's called the wet wall of the pool. So the idea being that we want to have something that's got a low reflective value and still provide a nice aesthetic for the project. And then I can go to the next slide. And this is the retaining wall materials that we're proposing to use, a tan, you know, charcoal tan, segmental block with planting in between, just to give a feel for what those might look like, rather than the computer rendering. Those are the two most important things, right there. Other than that, you know, just to add to what John said, we've cited the pool to reduce the amount of grading possible. There were no other locations that proved, you know, to provide less grading. And so we've terraced down the pool itself, as well as the lower patio, and then stepping down the retaining walls also. You know, any further terracing of the retaining walls really started to spill down the hill more, and you end up kind of chasing, chasing the tail, if you will. So we've done the best that we think we can do on the terracing to achieve a good screening of the project. I think that's, that's it. Rest of the slides are really just plant material, proposed plant material, if anybody wants to look at that.
Okay, great, thank you. Were there any other members of the applicant's team that wanted to present? Or is that complete? Looks like it's complete. Okay, are there any clarifying questions of the commissioners for, for staff or the applicant?
I just had a general question from my information. How long do these retaining walls last? Like, what's the typical structure lifetime of these walls?
These walls would be, they would last for over 50 years. I mean, they're concrete block walls. If we use the segmental system, you know, they're, they're basically backfilled with the geotechnical fabric that helps support them. So they'll, in all likelihood, outlast the, the structure of the house.
Good. Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, a few questions, I guess, while we're talking about the walls. So it's just a stone, stone wall with the retaining stones, no piers, no other reinforcement to that wall?
We could build it either way, but we're looking at doing a segmental wall system for the retaining walls themselves, which, but the pool itself will be built on piers and graving.
Okay, so the pool will actually be supported by, by piers versus the retaining wall holding all of the fill, including the load of the pool. That's, that's heard? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. The pool will be supported by piers.
John, these are for you, because in your presentation, I just want to make sure I heard you right. You said no public comments, either for or against, were received?
Right.
Okay, and then, how much fill did you say was, was going to be required?
About 150 cubic yards.
150?
150 cubic yards, yeah.
Okay. So a lot of truckloads. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Feng?
Yeah, I had, I had just one question. This was something that was mentioned in the report. I'm curious about, there was a reference to the six trees, which were a condition of approval of a prior application, which was not built. And I'm curious, I'm curious about exactly how that, how that works. If the, if the application that was approved was not built, then I'm curious why the requirement for the trees is there? And that, it doesn't seem like there's an issue with that, but.
No, I, no, I understand, Commissioner Feng, and you know, I can let the applicant discuss, you know, maybe if they have issues with replacing it. It came over at the time when it was, it was meant to, again, for this addition and whatever else. And it came at a point where these trees were topped, without detrimental to a hillside landscaping and whatnot. And that was the intent of the, of the condition at the time. And the applicant agreed to it, that they were going to replace those trees. And so, as it wasn't, as it wasn't done, we, you know, we let the applicant know that we were going to add this condition, and they were amendable to it as well.
Okay, great, thank you. That was all I had.
John, so really, it's a, it's a prior condition that you had, and you, it's not that they're, they're still conditioned because of the prior one, it's just because you essentially liked the condition and you wanted to include it this time. Is that about it?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I heard that some trees were topped. I guess, like a little clarification on, on that. I mean, are we talking, what, can you define that? How many trees? How big were the trees that were topped? I mean, are we talking, what, can you define that? How many trees? How big were the trees that were topped? And what was the, the visual impact of that?
You know, unfortunately, um, I don't have the size of the trees. However, the, the amount of trees were six. Um, and they were topped um, with, without, without a permit, so.
Okay, so I assume that was, that was to, for view purposes? They wanted those, those trees?
That's my understanding. Again, this is a project in fact of two thousand nine.
Okay, but you said the applicant was amenable to, to planting. Okay, thanks.
Um, would someone happen to know what mature height this uh, the California native incense tree ends up at? I noticed that it's kind of a conical form, um, so that should be beneficial, you know, for preserving their own view um, in the future. Um, but I'm just kind of wondering how tall they, they end up getting. That's one question. And the other one is, could you show um, a cross section with a fifteen percent um, line on there? Because it's a little confusing. Uh, so I was wondering if we could look at that. So those two questions. Thank you.
So um, I will show you the fifteen percent line now because I have it open. We'll start backwards. So one of the um, one of the requests of, of an application like this is to demonstrate the fifteen percent line. Oh, sorry, I did not share it. There we go. Anyone see that? So here's the, here's the accessory structure right here with the pool. Here's the, essentially the structure is at the very top, very top of the ridge. So the fifteen percent line is essentially anywhere you build on this ridge or near the house or near the, where this area is, is going to be within this fifteen percent line. Um, if, if this ridge line was a little more abrupt, where it, it came down um, and you were to build in this area, to say hypothetically, you, you wouldn't be within that. You wouldn't need a hillside exception, uh, because you wouldn't be protruding within that ridge line, uh, the fifteen percent. So essentially, it's, it's right here, the fifteen percent. Um, my understanding is that the, that the incense tree um, would grow, incense cedar would probably grow around forty, forty, fifty feet.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like a redwood will go two hundred feet or so, but it would be something mid, mid-sized tree.
Okay, I, I think what was a little confusing for me on the fifteen percent um, line is that I didn't see the um, the grade matching up on the, on the right hand of the, the diagram. So you follow what I'm saying? Because it's, yeah, I don't, I don't get that.
Okay, um, I, I, I guess I'm, I guess what you're trying to ask, what you're saying is that you don't under- so you can't see the connection, but you, where the structure is inside of the fifteen percent grade.
Well, if you show, if you go back to that image, it looks as though they're, they're doing a considerable amount of fill over the fifteen percent line. And I would think that it would be, you know, fifteen percent from the, from the uh, from the, the ridge. And then it's got a daylight out. And I, I'm not, not quite following um, how that's working. So see if you can pull it back up and I'll take another look and see, see what's going on there.
Sure.
Yeah, it's on the right hand.
Right here, right, right.
Yeah.
So the ridge would be somewhere around where the, where the house is. So it is coming out. So essentially, the top of the spa would be the, basically, the top of the ridge.
Yeah, I think, I think the, what's confusing is that from the, um, you've got a thirty percent grade. Um, and they're making it look as though it's, you know, maybe twenty, twenty percent um, on the right-hand side, when really it's going to be, you know, steeper and then, and then reconnect. Um, so.
So if I hear you correctly, you think the line should have been drawn, started, the point should have been right here with the, with the, with the fifteen percent coming down this way, rather, kind of hugging the ridge rather than.
No, no, I mean, on the right hand, from, from the bottom of the retaining wall, that it should, the soil would actually be a little bit steeper than that. Um, because there was a thirty, a thirty percent grade.
Right here, yes, the, the, the line would indicate a thirty percent grade, correct?
Yeah, okay, okay, that's good. And then the responsibility with regards to those retaining walls falls to the, your geotechnical engineer and uh, for the design, right? And, okay, so.
It'll go through it, but it will go through a process uh, between our, our consultant and, as well as our uh, public works department. And actually, even our building department as well. So there's, there's three levels of review of these, of all the structure and stability on the slope and whatnot.
Okay, and um, was the, was the property owner, um, it shown in the, in the diagram, if the, if north was straight up, they would have been to the northeast of, uh, was that, were they within the three hundred feet um, for public noticing?
Let me see here. So I'm trying to find him. I, I, I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that question?
Um, so you had a, you had a diagram which showed where the neighboring house was. Um, it was kind of zoomed out a bit and you could see them. And, and if north was straight up, then they were in the northeast quadrant. So I'm just wondering if they were within three hundred feet, so they would have been noticed, because that seems to be the, you know, the closest person and they would have been downhill. Um, so if they, I'm just curious if they were noticed. And then they also made no comment about what was going to be built.
So if I, and you can see the screen right now, right? So I'm assuming you're discussing this, this property right here.
Right, if, if north is up, then that, yeah, yeah, that one.
Correct, correct. So it's three hundred feet from the property line itself. So if it's, if the property is adjacent, it's going to get absolutely noticed.
Okay, absolutely, great. Um, and then I had one question. Um, is there some kind of protection required around the patio? And the pool should have like the six-foot uh, protective wall around it. But the patio looked like there was a potentially significant drop um, in elevation. Uh, and I'm wondering if there's something required there just for uh, safety.
Okay, let me share. Do you mind if I share that screen?
Um, please don't.
I have the, I have the plan set up, so just to illustrate what you're discuss, what you're talking about here. For the benefit of the public, um, is this way, it's a, you're, so these images right here, image two?
Uh, right. Mm-hmm, where the aderonic chairs are, yeah. Yeah, so it just, it just looks like you could fall off.
That's, you know, that's a great point. And, you know, unfortunately, um, I'm not an expert on the building code. I, I would assume, I would, I would feel a lot safer if they had, had something on there. And, you know, if, if there is required, it would be, it would be, um, it would be mandated by our, our building official. Um, you know, I, I wouldn't hesitate in asking the applicant's landscape architect and um, also uh, I think the general contractor is also available in terms of their intention of having some type of railing around here.
This drop is about four, I'm sorry.
No, no, please, push your sexy hand.
Uh, this drop is about four feet, right?
Um, I mean, here, I think, I think the first tier is about two and a half, and then it goes four, and then it goes about five and a half at, at its um, at its um, largest.
And how wide is the first level, like the landing of the first level?
So over here.
Three and a half feet.
Okay, three and a half feet.
Well, okay, on, on to that, what I just started. Uh, I was saying the six-foot wall around the pool, but I'm curious, because I'm actually not, not seeing, seeing that either. And uh, what are those requirements and those, would, does the applicant um, know what kind of um, safety measures would be for the uh, edge of the patio and the pool?
Yeah, that was my question I was trying to ask, because there are poor requirements for five feet uh, safety with a gate that opens outward that should be required by law.
Okay, so what happens when you've got an infinity-type pool like that, where the most of the pool, you can't, you, you're not like tall enough to climb up into it. Um, so almost by virtue of its design, you, you're, you can't get to it. But the upper portion off the patio, you can get to the pool. Um, or alternatively, yes?
No, no, go ahead, Chair More. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I thought somebody was answering.
No, my understanding in terms, I know Vice Chair Wong had a, a comment about, you know, gates being locked and whatnot. My understanding, that's, that's towards the, the side entrance of the, of the house and, and whatnot. I mean, that's my, my basic understanding of the, of the building codes requirements for uh, for new pools. You have to have a, where there's access to the site from, potential access to the site from the public right away. You, you, that's where you have the, the locked gates and whatnot, not necessarily around the pool itself.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
So if, if I may, Chair and Vice Chair, and, and some of these questions are, are really valid. And a lot of these are, are dealt with when it gets to the building permit stages. Um, so the safety and those kinds of stuff are, are dealt with in the building permit stages. So, you know, like, like John had mentioned, um, if the building official through the inspections and, and permit review determine that there is some, there's some safety issues and railings will be, will be required, then applicant will have to construct some sort of uh, uh, safety measure. So, um, but that is not technically, that, that in itself doesn't technically trigger the exception, the hillside exception, the railings.
Okay, um, are there any further clarifying questions from the commissioners? And if not, we will open it up for public comment. Yes?
I do. I just wanted to ask a question. Sorry about that. Uh, let me lower my hand. Yeah, the question I had was really is the, is the pool material concrete or fiberglass? I think it looks like it's concrete. I just wanted to double check.
I believe it is concrete, correct?
Yes, it's, it's concrete.
Are we saltwater or are we chlorine?
Um, it'll actually be probably UV uh, uh, and chlorine system.
A UV and chlorine system, okay. And then I, I do, I do want to emphasize that, you know, the, this, the safety gate for above-ground pools, um, because it's above ground, it's nor- now normally a gate, right? Infinity typically creates an interesting scenario, but especially when it's on a hillside where one side's there. I think you might, it's, it's something definitely to look into, because um, I, I think we, we still have some jurisdiction on that. So I would say to Director Fu, uh, you know, if, if we want to impose that restriction, we can. I, I think that's still within our rights uh, to do that, even though we're talking about the hillside exception. So I agree with that. I just want to make sure that the other commissioners know that that's within our purview.
Well, you're correct, Vice, Vice Chair. You absolutely have the uh, the, the power to authority to require that. I feel like that is something you want to see uh, at this stage, absolutely.
So long we're not on liability for not suggesting that. So that's, you know, I just want to make sure we're okay.
Uh, well, to, our intent is to meet the building, swimming pool, building code, health code is, you need two safety measures. Uh, so one will be um, basically the barrier, and that will be in part, you know, the retaining walls themselves. And then the doors on the house will have to be uh, alarmed to uh, you know, achieve the full enclosure there. And then the second um, safety measure will be a uh, a sonar alarm on the pool, since the.
Wonderful, okay, thank you.
You know, allow for a safety cover.
That works as well. Thank you.
Uh, Pat, would you happen to know if they're planning some kind of a uh, protective fence so that people don't, you know, fall off the patio area where the aderonic chairs were shown?
Yeah, we'll probably end up with either a uh, a bench or, and/or a rail there, depending upon, you know, what, what we feel uh, is, is, is our best solution. Um, you know, currently, I just have the walls designed so they don't require a rail uh, because of the drop-off, it's, it's not more than thirty inches. And then the next wall is, is more than three feet in horizontal distance. So you don't technically need something, but uh, my suggestion will probably be to put a rail on the lower wall below that, that uh, the, the actual patio level. And that way, if somebody does actually fall down into that first terrace, you don't go tumbling down to downtown, you know?
Precisely. Yep, that's, that's a concern. I, I did one of these, you know, back in the LA area in, in the canyon. And you need to make sure that people weren't going to go down the hill into the canyon. Um, so Commissioner Saxena, your hands raised?
Yeah, um, I have a general question. That existing house, uh, did it wa- uh, like, also meet the fifteen-degree guidelines? Or was it also built on the, under some exemption?
Scanning is that when this house was constructed originally, it didn't have, there was no hillside exception process. So the NHS ordinance came out, some time houses are built.
Yeah, because it looks like, if you draw a line, uh, the house would actually be in, um, maybe have a higher angle than fifteen. So, so it almost feels that we, the new requirement is still within the angle of the old house. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, so are, if there's no further qualifying questions, clarifying questions, yes? Commissioner Fang?
I, I was just going to say, just to uh, to clarify, the, there was a discussion previously about the slope line, the fifteen-degree slope line uh, related to trees. But I just wanted to confirm that the slope line does not actually include vegetation on it. It's, this is the ground slope. Is that correct? Uh-oh.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, it looks like we lost John there. Great, that was all my, that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Super, okay. So if there are no further questions, we'll open it up to a public comment. Um, recall that if you have call, if uh, dialed in, you need to hit star nine, and I have a visitor. Okay, um, so at the moment, I am not seeing any hands raised. Okay, and I do now. All right, so first, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda. You have uh, three minutes. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, welcome. Three minutes.
Thank you again. Uh, just a general question about uh, construction in the Baracle Fault and Sergeant Fault uh, areas. These are capable of six-point-oh and six-point-seven-five um, earthquakes. And over the years, I've asked the State Mining and Geology Board to update the maps pertaining, pursuant to the Alquos Priolo Act, and I haven't gotten very far with that. These, these faults first came to light, they've kind of, they, because I've been following the, the Lehigh quarry, the permanent decay, the Baracle Fault runs right through it, and then it runs up through Los Gatos. And, and um, there have been earthquakes along it. And as we continue to build in the hillsides, just wondering what we're doing to make our buildings safer. And that's my comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rhoda. Let's see if we have any further hands raised. And I'm seeing none. And did we receive any written communications during this item, Madam Clerk?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. And uh, we do have the geologist, or is that right? Is it the geologist? We have someone, a geotechnical uh, engineer here. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is John Guishan with Langen.
Would you be able to address um, Rhoda Frye's uh, question about the, the earthquakes there? And what in your estimation um, the impact of, of those comments about the earthquakes would be for this project?
Uh, sure. The earthquakes, I mean, there are faults nearby, but the site is not in a mapped Alquos Priolo zone. Fault rupture is not an issue. So the, the main issue is ground shaking. The retaining walls would be designed per code, so um, you know, any seismic increment that's needed would be included in the design. And that should take into account the shaking level at the site.
Okay, so um, with regards to the retaining walls, there were some questions about the, the piles. Um, so what, how are you planning on, on designing this uh, for the swimming pool and, and the retaining walls? And uh, are you going to have a, a, how, you know, how much soil buildup do you anticipate behind those um, retaining walls? Will, will the pool impact the walls, is my question?
Uh, the pool could impact a lot. It actually could help, though, just because water weighs less than soil. So there is some benefit there. Um, but the, the design, just, you know, the, we don't design the retaining wall, but the, the manufacturer would take the forces that we can provide them, including seismic increment, then they figure out how deep their footing is. If the footing can't work, then they would add piers or some sort of deep foundation to help resist any overturning.
Okay, right. And that, yeah, that's the, the concern, that you're going to have too much uh, lateral seismic pressure. Okay, force, I should say. Um, were there any further questions? Or would somebody like to make a motion um, for this project?
Yeah, I'd like to motion.
Be able to make a motion.
Madam Chair, I don't believe you closed the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Um, and with that, we have no further uh, comments from the public. So we're going to close the public hearing and uh, begin our deliberations. Uh, we have a motion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yeah, um, I propose a motion to approve the staff's proposal.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, Steph, we probably need to um, add some more uh, language around uh, that motion. Um, that we, you know, we find the project as exempt from CEQA and, you know, et cetera. So, um.
Correct. Chair, I think you want to, you want the motion should, should read that the commissioner adopted Bull's draft resolution to find a project exempt from CEQA and approve the hillside exception EXC, EXC 2020 dash 001.
And, uh, if I could add one more thing, Ben, with, uh, staff did recommend amending, uh, the tree replacement for top trees condition to add the nine, uh, 24 inch box replacements.
Um, right. You had, uh, actually several items, um, starting, uh, gosh, around page six, uh, you had to, the conditions administered by the Community Development Department, you had items, uh, I believe it was one through 13 that are added on?
Yes.
Okay. And one through 12, right, okay. And then you've got, uh, grading drainage, et cetera. So it was to, um, page 12. Um, so I, that I think needs to be added to the, the motion as well, um, if that's, if it's not clear enough. So, uh, Sarah, would you like to help us out with this? Uh, do we let this motion?
Yes. So, um, you can, if you look at page six, I believe the motion should be to find the project exempt from CEQA.
Right.
Um, to approve the application for the hillside exemption. And then you can just say pursuant to the conditions, uh, with the resolution. Um, but you will, you will want to add, if you would like to add the staff recommended change to condition nine on the top trees, you should clarify that in the motion as well.
Uh, condition nine, was that not added in? Oh, it says six, six former existing trees that were tops shall be replaced with, on a one-on-one basis with six 48. Okay. And the option, the other option was, or was it nine 24?
That's correct.
Okay. Or nine 24 inch, okay. Um, so can the original motion be, uh, added to by Commissioner Saxena with those items? Or how, how do we, do we just let that one fail and then we start another one, start it over from scratch?
I, I believe that Commissioner Saxena can clarify that that was the intent of his motion and then resecond it and then proceed.
Yeah, I, I will clarify that, um, the intent is as stated by, uh, Chair Moore.
Second it again.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Well, yeah, I think we have deliberation at this point.
Uh, yes.
I don't have to go first for them, but I'm happy to. I just wanted to say, you know, in reviewing this project, I felt that the, um, objectives of what were being done, uh, the expansion was relatively modest, particularly relative to the size of the site. The grading was also, uh, pretty modest. Uh, the wildlife impact was, uh, was, um, reviewed in this design as well. So, uh, you know, I generally, you know, I'm generally supportive. Uh, uh, I would vote in favor of this. Uh, I think I did, uh, contact, uh, I did contact John to talk a little about the, um, geological report and the recommendations, which, you know, there are mentions that they were adopted. Those were actually around, uh, this came up in the discussion around the mounting of the pool and its piers and, uh, you know, subject to further, you know, review during construction. So I think that that's, uh, good as well. Uh, the only thing, the only comment I would have at this point is that I think the tree re, the tree requirement is a little funny since that was a requirement that was part of the approval that didn't happen. Uh, you know, that perhaps there's a, uh, you know, cause for a, you know, a, you know, penalty for improper, um, kind of the trees, of the existing trees, but, um, you know, if the, it looks like this is not an issue with the applicant, so, you know, I have no problem with that as well. Um, with regard to the fencing discussion, uh, I think that implicitly, uh, anything that we approve is, uh, subject to, uh, meeting building standards. Uh, you know, I think the intent is clearly there that, um, should they, should there be a requirement that comes up as part of the development process that they'll, um, that they're open to approving that as well. So I, I see no issues with this and I support the, uh, support the motion. Thank you.
Great. Uh, would anyone else like to speak on the matter?
Uh, I'd just like to say that I feel that, uh, since the new construction is within the, the, the grade of the existing house, uh, it doesn't seem to visually disturb the thing. And I don't know if people notice that this house is right under the big PDNE lines. So there is enough visual, um, clutter there already. So I very much doubt that this is going to impact and I'm very supportive of the thing as long as we take care of all the other issues I've raised today.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Takahashi?
Yeah, um, I guess I would agree with the comments to date. Um, the addition is relatively small in square footage, however, given the slope, it is quite a bit of fill. Um, and that wall's going to have to bear a pretty significant load with the pool on top. Um, so, you know, clearly, uh, structural review, um, would be pretty critical, um, to making sure that, you know, it's, that the owner does build a structure that, uh, doesn't have any issues. Um, with the trees, it's, it's, I think it's a, it's a positive that the, the applicant is willing to, um, adhere to the recommendation or the modification. Um, I'm thinking, just based on what's been presented, that, um, the applicant did top trees for view and then decided not to make the addition, but nonetheless did, um, take an action that I think probably was not approved. Um, therefore, um, planting the, the recommended trees, I think, is a, is a, as a, a positive step. And that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Takahashi and Vice Chair Wong.
It's not true. Uh, I agree with a lot of things, uh, my fellow commissioners have been talking about. I really like the fact that it's still within the slope. Uh, I'm actually, you know, in an area such as it is on the hillside, I think it's important for people to be able to expand and, uh, build their property as they see fit, uh, within the rules. And so I, I think it's a well-thought-out project and, uh, I think it's a good addition for the owners. So I, I'm in support of this project and I hope that, you know, these hillside exceptions, I know why they're, uh, essential. Uh, I hope there's a way to actually make some of this stuff standardized in the future so other people will actually be able to streamline that process as they're looking to improve their lands, uh, especially in the middle of a pandemic where everybody's trying to improve their space around them. And to make that easier for residents, I think is something we can do, uh, as, as part of the planning commission. So, so I support this.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, one of the things that I, uh, am interested in with the design is that you're, you're now kind of separating the house a little bit more from the hillside and the grasses there. Um, so hopefully that's going to provide some more protection, um, for, for fire danger. Um, I like that you're going to be adding more, um, vegetation that I presume is going to have to be irrigated, um, there as well. Uh, in the future, I'd like to actually see the protective fencing if it's needed, but I'm hearing that you're at 30 inches. But if you're planning on putting some in, I would like to, you know, have that in the drawings. Um, I think that would, you know, help so that we don't just, you know, spend time spinning our wheels asking those types of, uh, questions. Um, when I went out there, there was a large, uh, tank, um, and, and the, the power lines, um, which, you know, I agree with Commissioner Saxena, there, there are some things, uh, going on there visually. Um, when I drove on the private, um, road, there is a, a little bit of an area where just, I'll just mention that it looked like, uh, it might need some protection, that there had been some erosion on the side of that, that road going up. And it is a private road, just, I wanted to point that out. Um, and when I drove it and I was trying to see who, who would be able to see this property and this addition, um, it looked like, um, maybe one other neighbor, um, that was down the road a little bit, um, well, two, that would, when they would access it, that they would see, um, what was built when they drive up. But there was really just a few little tiny view areas when you did it. It was really, you know, you, you really had to be looking for it to try to find it. Um, so I think, given that the actual owner is probably going to be noticing whatever they build, um, there the most, um, that they will be the most, um, conscientious about, uh, having it to be attractive and have the landscaping look, look good there. So anyway, it looks, uh, like they've got a great pool coming in and with some awesome views of the valley. Uh, so having no further comments, um, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you, Chair Moore. Uh, excuse me, Commissioner Wong? Vice Chair Wong, sorry.
I'm in favor. Uh, Vice Chair, I'm in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fong?
Uh, aye, I approve.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yep.
And Chair Moore?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. All right. Um, thank you. And let's look at, we have no old business. Um, we have, uh, no new business that I'm, that I'm aware of. And we then move on to staff and commission reports. Do we have?
No staff, no staff reports.
Okay. Any commission reports? Okay. I just want to mention, um, goodness, I sat in on the VTA Public Advisory Board meeting on, uh, yesterday and it looked like they approved seven zero, um, these improvements on SR 85 and something on the order of, over, a little over $300 million. So it'll be interesting to see what they, um, end up putting there. Uh, but it looks like we're having some improvements to transit, um, coming in the future. And with that, are there any further commission reports? Seeing no further reports, we are adjourned to our next regular meeting. Thank you.[1613.73]